Wonderful. I think we'll get started then. We have 7:01 and we have a quorum. So tonight, um, welcome to-
Megan, Megan, you might want to wait a second. Um, holding cable is having a technical problem.
All right, no problem. Just give me the go ahead when they're ready.
Megan?
Yes?
Evan will let me know when they are set. I am recording the meeting, so if you want to start, we at least have the Google Meet record.
I might give it um, to 7:05 if people don't mind. Um, just in case, I know these meetings are pretty widely watched. I want to give the public an opportunity. So let's wait to 7:05 and then we'll check back in then. So if anybody needs a last minute stretch, give yourself a couple of minutes.
The YouTube stream is running.
All right, I've got 7:05 on my clock. Um, we are recording and streaming on YouTube. Um, so I think it is satisfactory to move forward tonight. So I wanted to welcome everybody tonight to regular meeting 1353 of the Waukesha Regional School District School Committee, held tonight, Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, um, via Google Meets, uh, per the regulation set last March, um, by Governor Charlie Baker. I cannot believe that we are officially on month seven of pandemic. First tonight, um, we're going to have a public hearing. Um, I have a single, um, comment to read, uh, for a couple of public comments, so I will read that and then we will move on this evening. Good evening. My name is Mary Shepherd, President of the Waukesha Regional Education Association, 1320 Waukesha Street in Jefferson. Teachers want to be heard, students want to be heard, administrators want to be heard, and school committee members want to be heard, but no one is listening. In education leadership classes, I learned to enter a leadership role observing. In this pandemic environment, I hit the ground running with time just to extinguish fires. Making the time to step back and observe from my new role has opened my eyes wider, letting me connect with my observations with some prior knowledge. When I started in public education as an ESP over a decade ago, one afternoon faculty meeting still resonates with me. The new superintendent was sharing with her staff how to reach a common goal. She showed two pictures. Each picture had the goal represented by a dot at the top center of the page. Below the dot were more dots representing the individuals who carry out the goal. In the first picture, the dots were scattered. There is no clear direction like the kids on the playground. In the second picture, the dots were moving towards the direction of the goal, like students on their way to lunch from different hallways. We as educators would be remiss if we didn't have a method to get our students to the objective. However, the administration has neglected to provide a clear objective to teachers, nor the path to get there, and no one is listening. Two summers ago, I experienced a life-altering diversity lesson for PD in ELL. In this workshop, I learned about individual-centered cultures and community-centered cultures. We live in an individual-centered culture. We are asked from a young age, what are you going to do when you grow up? How are you going to make a difference in the world? Never how are we going to make a difference? We perform parallel responsibilities in our day-to-day lives with many in our community, never intersecting, never learning about each other because no one is listening. Taking this new knowledge, we see it here in school committee meetings, meeting after meeting with individual-centered culture views, the school committee members get stuck. Some say it's a personal agenda of individual members, but I think like systemic racism, individual-centered culture is systemic. It pits us against one another and we lose sight of moving forward towards the betterment of our community. Each member speaks their part, but others may be rarely listening, or they are listening to respond versus listening to understand. In reality, no one's listening. With individual-centered culture comes a lot of anger. It's my way or the highway attitude. The anger in our school district is years deep. Anger is like a hot coal. You can carry this burning feeling everywhere you go. In mindfulness training, anger is just the tip of the iceberg. Under the water are the true feelings of shame, embarrassment, and hurt. We, the educators, are feeling the shame and embarrassment, yet we cover it well with smiles since the success of our students is paramount, always putting our personal needs to care for our own stress because of the fact no one's listening. Let me reiterate here, my vision of sharing more kindness for a better community. As I develop and deepen the vision of kindness, I realize educator morale must be the priority. Educators are on the front lines for the sole purpose of a better community. Each educator has a symbiotic relationship with students. Their students have a symbiotic relationships with their parents. Their parents have symbiotic relationship with our elected school committee members. School committee members have a symbiotic relationship with our superintendent. Our superintendent through the principals have a symbiotic relationship with us educators. It's a circle, a large circle representing all of us. When one link is weak, we all feel it. As educators on the front lines, we know to listen to our students. We're the first to go above and beyond. We share our ideas with administration, but no one is listening. So as I welcome you here today, um, I again remind, um, members to carry on that message of listening to one another. Uh, the best way we can listen is to look at one another. So again, as has been made practice, please turn your cameras on unless you are in a situation, um, that precludes you from doing so. Um, we're going to stick to our two minutes per person, per topic tonight as usual as well, in order to give everybody equal voice, um, to have their voice heard in our meetings. As I was reflecting on my opening comments, um, this evening, I almost felt like it was Groundhog Day. Rushed home from work, spent a little time with the kids, did a few miles of a run just to get some stress out and got ready for tonight's meeting, thinking about what I wanted to talk about. As I've said before, the only thing certain in these times is uncertainty, but we look towards our school district to be a beacon of stability in these uncertain times. We meet every other week. We smile once in a while. Some days we're stressed out and bleary-eyed. We as a school committee implore the administration in our own ways for clarity, for more information, for better communication with our constituents. We cross our fingers that the communication is going to happen. Some, some meetings were more forceful about it than others, and then we crossed that bridge again two weeks later when we're back here. So as of Monday, March, uh, March, as of Monday, October 5th, we got an email from the administration stating that more detailed plans would come this week or next in regards to the hybrid plan we have so hoped for to unveil in this November. No email came last week, and as of Tuesday this week, we certainly do not have further information. In some ways, it almost feels like a trauma situation where we sit here hoping that the best comes, but always preparing for the worst. So tonight, I reiterate our request to have more information, to have that information come on a weekly basis, to have our parents updated and what's working and what's not working, to maybe even highlight some of the great teaching and learning that is going on because we as school committee members, we as parents know there is amazing teaching and learning happening even in a remote setting. Let us know, keep us informed, tell us when things aren't going well, tell us when deadlines won't be reached and we'll understand. But hearing nothing is, again, bringing us right back to that trauma that we've experienced over the last seven months. With that, I want to say, um, hello to our student reps tonight, Kaneci and Catherine. Um, do you guys have a report for us? Catherine's smiling. I think that means yes.
Um, yeah, I can start. So our sports team started playing games again between now and the last meeting. Um, they're all going very well. Um, we had 50 kids enter back into the building on that October 5th date, about 50 kids, and Principal Bendo says it's going very well so far. Um, we offered the SATs, um, October 3rd, and then we're offering them again in November. And the PSATs will be offered to our sophomores and juniors on the 17th. Um, and then our student council is offering a pumpkin carving contest open to all members of the district, not just high school families. Um, and so they're asking people to drop off pumpkins at the Waukesha, um, main office on 1029, and then there's a drive-through event, the 30th, where people can drive through and see all the pumpkins and enjoy that. So that's one nice thing happening this fall. That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
So simple. Kaneci, do you have a report as well?
Um, I have some questions. Am I allowed to ask questions during this time?
Um, I would hold your questions, um, until the superintendent's report, um, and then when we go around the table, I actually will call on you first.
I feel like this is unrelated, but it's, it might be slightly unrelated to school itself.
Give it to me.
It's about the flu shots that are mandatory.
Yes.
Is that included in the reports?
No, but that's a state mandate, so I, we can try to help.
Okay, so, um, where will we be turning in this paperwork? Will it be on the website, or do we have to turn it in by hand to the school nurses?
That is a good question.
Very good question, Kaneci. In the same way that we do with, you know, all of the documentation that gets shared. So if it's electronic, it can be shared electronically. If it's a paper form, it can be dropped off at the school for the nurse.
Okay. Uh, will the district be offering flu shots? So, um, at individual schools? Nope. Okay. Nope. We'll have to think of it clinics. Uh, will remote students that don't do any extracurricular activities, in other words, no contact at all with other students? Will they have to take flu shots?
They do. That's the mandate.
Okay, so everybody has to take flu shots. Yeah. Thank you.
Good question, though. It's coming. The deadline's what, December 31st, Dr. McCall?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Kaneci? All right. Thank you guys both for sharing. We always appreciate it. It almost felt like a real in-person meeting, just talking about sports and, and normal, normal things from the old-fashioned times. Um, so next, we're going to go to the superintendent's report. Dr. McCall, do you have things you want to highlight?
Sure, I'll highlight a couple of things. Um, you know, thank you, everybody, for coming. I hope everyone had a nice, um, you know, extended weekend, uh, in terms of, um, you know, having a data kind of, a little, one more day to kind of pull things together. Uh, you know, we did have, um, our students return to school last, uh, week on October 5th, and we were very excited to have, um, those students come into our buildings, so they returned to 11 of our buildings. And we had almost 200 students, um, back in, in classrooms. This is a big step for the district, a big step for teachers, and for, I think, parents and families. Just getting back to, as you said, Chair Weeks, kind of that, the, the norm, uh, it feels a little more normal. So, um, I know I was excited to see the vans pulling into ECC and families dropping their kids off, uh, over the past week. So again, what we're going to do is we're going to phase in, um, you know, more time with these students over the next, uh, couple of weeks. And, you know, by November 18th, we're looking at bringing all of our students back into, uh, the hybrid model, um, that we'll be, you know, moving forward with, starting, um, you know, that Wednesday. You know, in terms of, uh, some of the other items that we've been talking about, I know, um, there have been some issues associated with, uh, Google. We, so we had some Chromebooks issues. It had been, uh, really keeping teachers and, uh, kids from accessing a lot of the online learning that was going on. So, uh, there was a, a plugin that, uh, ended up getting put out there. It has alleviated a lot of the issues. I think it's a little better than it was, and I've talked to our IT department, Barry, about that. And it, it's better. It's not perfect, but it's definitely a little better. And, you know, in terms of the remote learning, we feel as though that's, that's going to really help out, um, you know, as kids kind of stay, stay moving with that. And the, the other part that I just did want to talk about is, just want to, you know, thank Director Dede for, um, really the hard work that he put forth. Um, I, if people read my report, um, about the refinancing of some of the bonds that we have, uh, here in the district, and it's, uh, it's almost $700,000 worth of savings that the towns will actually see over the next 10 years, which is, you know, over 10 years, it's a lot of money. Um, and, you know, I really appreciated the fact that Director Dede kind of put forth that type of effort, uh, in, in terms of looking to kind of pull together, uh, some, some unique ways in order for us to help all of our communities save, um, you know, over the next five to 10 years. Uh, in terms of what we're looking at for, um, some of the information around, uh, hybrid learning, remote learning, uh, there will be some more. We, we had a great meeting with our teachers' union, uh, about 30, um, actually 40 teachers, and some administration met last Tuesday evening where we had an extensive, uh, conversation around a variety of hybrid models, um, that we're currently looking at. And we have, um, another meeting set up with our teachers' union on Thursday evening, and we'll be, you know, concluding our discussions, and information will be out, um, to families around the remote, uh, plan as well as the hybrid plan, so that, um, you know, family, and I know this is something people have been anxious for and so forth, um, and it's, it looks like it's coming together nicely right now, so, uh, that is, that is going to be here by the end of the week.
Thank you so much, Dr. McCall. Um, as been our practice, um, in the last few months, I'm going to go around the roundtable. Um, we are missing a few members this evening, um, so be patient as I go through the list with those who are here and not here. Um, but I'm actually going to start. Where have we not started? I know Member Smith, um, may be here only for a short time, so Christina, why don't we start with you in case you do need to leave? I think she accidentally left the meeting instead of unmuting. It happens to me all the time. There she is. You're muted. Now you're muted, but you're here. Life in Google Meets land is never easy. All right, she's back. Christina?
I will get this. It is just different where these buttons are. I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
So, and all of that to say, I am all set. I don't have any questions on the report. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Christina. I just wanted to make sure you got to go in case you needed to leave. Um, we'll then go down. Kelly? Member Williamson?
Hi, everyone. Um, I just had one question about, um, Director Keenan's report on the homeschooling numbers, and I, the people that are staying in contact with the district, continuing to get those emails, I was just curious if he had insight into whether or not, like, they were homeschooling, because this is so hard for families trying to juggle the remote learning and, and, um, the concept of hybrid learning for their schedules. Is it more of a schedule-based thing for all of these new homeschooling? I just was curious if he had that, that kind of insight, and if they might return, you know, when things are back to normal.
Sure. Do you mean as far as what they're looking for, for information?
Um, I guess more, more insight into, um, you know, what, why they chose to homeschool, and, and if it seems likely that they're, you know, that they're looking to come back when, when the schedule is more manageable.
Sure. Um, yeah, and just to give some context, uh, for people that haven't read, uh, my report. So, uh, for families that are homeschooling, uh, I sent out a form to give them the option to still continue to receive, uh, district messages. This is just a way to really keep them, uh, up to date, especially around remote learning. I had a lot of families, especially new homeschooling families, that, um, may not have been planning to homeschool other than the remote learning model. Um, so, uh, so basically, they're, they're looking to just be up to date about, plans as we release them, so they can make decisions about, um, you know, possibly returning. Uh, because I did hear that. I've been talking to a lot of those families, just trying to provide that, um, that kind of, uh, information. So if that helps a bit, uh, we've had a lot of people sign up for that, as I think about, uh, 90 families so far. Even some families that have been homeschooling for years that would still like to be up to date. Um, it's just a technicality, so once they're unenrolled, it pulls them out of power school and they do stop automatically. So, you know, once we, um, uh, worked around that, uh, I think it'll be good because then they'll, they'll have the most up-to-date information as it comes out.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Thank you guys so much. Uh, Member Woodland?
Hi, um, I have a few different questions. Um, so I have a question about the ECC, um, starting this week, and if that's just the, um, the special education students returning, or if they're the tuition students also, um, that are in, in the building.
Chris, go ahead.
Sure. We'll have, um, inclusion partners returning on the 26th of, um, October. So at this point, it's just our, um, most, our highest needs special education students, um, and other students will begin on the 26th in the ECC.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I was, uh, I have another question about, um, looking towards the hybrid plans. Um, I, one of my major concerns going forward is that whenever the switch to full hybrid, um, in November, whenever, whenever that occurs, however that occurs, that we don't lose what is working in remote, and because there's still going to be those two and a half days of remote. And so, um, I'm wondering what kind of data is being collected, what kind of information is being collected to maintain, um, any, anything that is working that can be pulled forward, that can be pulled into the hybrid model and for future, uh, days. Um, so that's one question, but I also want to make sure I, I ask this too. There was a little, I, I saw a little confusion on, um, busing deadlines. Are we having families choose to bus or not bus their kids, um, earlier than the hybrid or remote choice? Um, because I think that there's some maybe inconsistency in communication on that. Um, and, uh, yeah, that's really what I, I would hope you could answer is, um, about the remote, what is working in remote, how's that data getting collected, what's being retained for the future use?
Sure. So I'll start with the busing question. No, they're the same timeframe. Uh, they shouldn't be at different times. Uh, so the busing and the hybrid choices happen at the same time. In reference to kind of collection of the information, one of the things that we spent a long time talking about the other day with our teachers was really what was working, you know, in terms of the, the remote model at the, at the various levels. And, you know, I know that there are, they're pretty, you know, it's interesting because I, when I'm thinking about what we're seeing right now, um, at the elementary level, middle school level, and high school level, teachers are feeling very passionate about the time that they're having, um, to work with the kids. And I think in many, many places, it's working very, very well. Some of it is person-dependent, Linda, so it's their level of comfortability associated with being in, on a screen in front of, uh, you know, in front of their students and having that capacity to do that. Sometimes that's a little different than, well, actually, it's very different than standing up in front of a class or, or being able to work, you know, one-on-one with a student, um, whenever there's a question that you need to take care of in reference to, uh, anything that's going on in the classroom. So there is some information that we're looking at in terms of how we might be able to take what, what's working there and carry that into the, you know, because you've got to think that full day on Wednesday is a day when we're going to have everyone together. So that classroom is going to be back together at that time. The A days and the B days, those kids are going to be separated. So that's where we're going to be looking at, okay, how might that, some of that stuff that's worked now translate into what happens on a Wednesday, but also during the remote times when kids are going to be spending more time working asynchronously versus synchronously?
Um, I just want to make sure that the other part of my question is answered. I very much appreciate that explanation.
Sure.
Um, so is the information on what's working, um, only getting collected in that kind of group, like from this past Tuesday? Or is there an ongoing discussion at another level, um, that would be communicated district-wide for our, our teachers?
So principals are working individually with each of their schools as they go through this? And then when we talk collectively, we're, we're talking about that on a whole. So when, you know, for example, we met with our building principals on Thursday, we met with them again today, and we talk about what's working, what isn't working, how are we kind of moving forward with this? With the ultimate goal of looking at what's happening with hybrid. So that's really what we're looking at. So it's moving from remote to hybrid, but, okay, what's, what's keeping the remote piece working well right now? One of the things that we're looking at is that remote's working well in the sense that everybody is there in front of you at that time. So I think the student engagement piece is much greater than what we had originally anticipated where it would be, uh, you know, versus what happened in March, April, May, June of, of last spring. So that's one of the things that's actually been helpful for, for us because as we kind of look at transferring over into a hybrid model, we've already established this, these roles and routines associated with remote learning. And that's something at the, um, at the elementary level that has been, I think, it's taken a lot of time, and teachers are being very patient, but you know what? It's, it's going to work itself out. Middle school level, again, um, it's, sometimes it's, it's middle school. So, uh, sometimes kids don't always focus as much as they really want to focus in middle school. That's okay. That's, but that's kind of, the middle school teachers know how to deal with that. At the high school level, we're really seeing it work. It's working really well right now, uh, in terms of just the capacity of the teachers to kind of share that information and the ability of the students to work a little more independently. So we're looking at how that can get infused into what we're doing as well.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate that, and it's nice to hear the good news as well. Member Young?
I don't have any comments on the report this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Young. Um, going forward, uh, to the beginning of the alphabet now, uh, Member Ayala?
Um, just one question. I don't know if this is the right time to ask, but I just was wondering if there's any further information about, um, the consultants that were, were spoken about in the report. I know you said there were three, and I think there's one more possibly you were going to speak to.
Sure. So I, I can give you a, a brief update. So I've, um, talked with three. I have as well as, uh, Deputy Superintendent Berllo, um, and I also have Brendan, uh, Director Keenan involved as well. So we've actually spoken with, um, three different consulting firms. Um, one of them was a person, two firms, uh, about, um, you know, what we're looking for in terms of, uh, some type of support, especially around, um, the central, the, the kind of scarcity of resources in terms of personnel at the central office level and how they can best support us. Um, I've had some really good conversations, and I'm, I'm looking forward to kind of bringing, um, one, if not two, on for, um, it's kind of different, different roles in terms of the support that they can play for the district, but it will, uh, definitely benefit us, you know, moving forward. I can see this turning into something that either becomes a continuum associated with supporting central office and our, our buildings, uh, which is something that, uh, one of these firms does, and they do it extensively throughout the, throughout the state. So I think that would be something that could really benefit our district moving forward, considering the fact that we don't have a director of operations, we have a deputy superintendent that's spread thin. Um, we don't have a pupil personnel person, we have a director of SEL. We don't have a pupil personnel person, we have a director of SEL, but the he's doing all these pupil personnel pieces as well as the SEL, the coaching, the homeschool, all of those things. So we have, you know, we're definitely looking at how we can best support the people that we have right now with some of those outside consultants. But um you know, I should have something together by the end of the week that I could share with the school committee.
Thank you, Member Ayala. Uh, Member Bennett? Hi, Krista. You seem muted. There you go.
I don't I don't have any comments. I just couldn't get to the button.
It's nice to say hi to you, though.
Hi.
Member Brown?
Well, um, my son went back to the building at the high school um last week and um he's really enjoying it. He's getting a lot out of it. He hasn't really um got a lot out of the uh the remote. Um, he's not really good on an iPad. And so um everything um has really changed around for him at the high school. And um also I want to highlight um what was on Dr. McCall's report that um the bargaining team and regarding the MOA um for the hybrid, um, they, the teachers and the administration have been meeting all last week, or forty teachers and brainstorming on the models that Dr. McCall will be presenting later on uh this week. So um, you know, I do believe um that we're listening, um especially to the teachers and and we're getting their input and everything on 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 what is, you know, matters to them in regarding the hybrid. So I just wanted to have mentioned that.
Thank you, Member Brown. Uh, Member Dennis isn't with us tonight. Member Gusterson?
Okay, sorry, I wasn't expecting that usually later. Um a couple of things, a couple of my questions have already been answered, so that's a good thing. Um I was curious about, um, I had a follow up on the consultant question. That was one of my questions. See more information about that and a timeline for that. So what I heard, I think I heard you just say, Daryl, is that you're talking to several people. You're um possibly hiring two of them instead of just one of them. And you're hoping to give us an update by the end of the week? Is that what I've heard?
Yes.
Okay. I will again cross my fingers we have an update because our request at the meeting was that we'd have one hired by now. And I was surprised honestly that we didn't get even a summary. I think it would have been helpful to get a summary of kind of what you've the kind of things you're discussing with them as an update rather than I don't have an answer for you. Um, because that we were very specific that we would like an answer by today. And I just, I I understand things take longer. I'm not upset about that. I I just was hoping we would have a little more detail about kind of the direction you're heading. Um, so I appreciate you giving us a little bit and I will will hope that we do get more detail by the end of the week so we know kind of where that's heading. Um I had
Malaya, just to kind of confirm, so the way it's kind of played out, and again, I don't think there was the expectation that I'd have these these a firm or firms hired by by today's meeting. I think ultimately it was, you know, having the opportunity within the, you know, the ten business days or whatever it is to pull together these firms. My issue, and this is the issue that happens anytime we bring somebody on, you have to pull together a contract, you have to
Absolutely.
back and forth. So it it does take time around, you know, finalizing
Yeah.
anything associated, you know, with something, you know, it's not like we're hiring a a an outside consultant to do a psych eval, which it's like, okay, that's
No, I understand. I understand that. I just think I was just hoping for a little more information on how, what direction you were going because what I'm not going to argue over, but I just that I didn't, I I am realistic about contracts taking time. I was just hoping for more information about where things were and what direction, kind of what sorts of things you're hoping to bring them on to do. Um, that's just me. I'm just one of one of us and we talked about it at the special meeting, so I won't repeat all that. Um Another question I had was, I think touched on that it looked from your report like phase two of returning has disappeared, but I know from the CPAC meeting that there's kind of a one point five sort of happening in October. Um is that taking the place of what was phase two or is it just being called something different? Or your report skipped ahead to November? And several people had asked me about that.
Sure, sure. And I I think
Christine, I see raising your hand to clarify. Thank you.
Sure, sure. Uh, so let me just be clear. So one point five, so phase one um began on October the fifth. That was for our students who came in on October the fifth and they're coming in for some shortened days. One point five uh was a name that I sort of created. I'll I'll take total heat for that. And I did that so that I could give placement to what we said in the report, which was over the course of October, we would be extending the time for our students in phase one. So that's ultimately what one point five is. We just needed to give it some more parameters for the busing company to really figure out what we were asking. Um, because when you extend the time, you're really creating new routes for all of the kids.
Mm hmm.
So one point five is about those phase one students still attending, but attending for longer periods of time in some cases, not in all of the cases is that happening. And then we are on track for that and for um phase two. So for phase two, we are adding more students to um the the to the in-person learning opportunity. So what we've done at this point is we've given all of those names to our transportation company and asked them to root all of the routes as if we are looking at September twenty sixth. But we're going to start some of those routes as early as, I'm sorry, October twenty sixth and start them as early as October nineteenth. Um, so that's the work that's being done right now by our transportation company is creating those routes. And our intention is to get that information back from AA um by Thursday and turn that information back out to our parents by Friday um with the extended times for October nineteenth and the extended time and um programs for October twenty sixth. Um, so all of that information, we have a hot deadline coming up this week. We have gotten the information out to AA and we're getting back those routes right now. What we're trying to do is not create um, you know, that day one for kids in on October the fifth and then another day one on October nineteenth and then another day one on September twenty sixth, because each one of those day ones, if you will, is creating um delays or difficulties with families as they, as the bus routes keep changing. So
Yeah.
The long and short of it is that, yes, we are on track. I'm glad you're asking me um that question, Malaya, and we will get more information out to families. Um, I have a hard deadline this weekend of, I mean, this Friday of making sure that all of the families that are connected to phase one point five and phase two get that information by Friday.
I appreciate that because the Daryl's report skipped over phase two and it was confusing. So I said, I think this is still happening. So thank you for clarifying that.
Member, you have one more quick question?
Uh, I will throw it out there and I'm sure other people will probably add to it. So I'll just throw it out there that I I was hoping for more details about the enrollment numbers. Um, the last ones that we had um prior to this were for homeschool and private school were August twenty eighth, provided at our September meeting. And um if you add all those up to the homeschool numbers we got in Brendan's Brendan's report, there's only sixty-three students additional in private school. So I think there's probably more than that by now. And I I would like to see the numbers that we had shared with the state, even if they're preliminary. Um, I think it would be helpful. So
Yes.
In the numbers.
Yeah, Brendan, Director Keenan.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'm going to respond to that. Um, so we have not submitted that report yet. It's a bit of a misnomer. Uh, so October one report for the state means that as as of that date, it's what we have for enrollment. To actually figure out where students are takes the whole month of October. So that is actually due at the end of the month. Um what I gave you back in Oct- in August, uh, the where it showed actually private school enrollment, that was all based on basically the tallying that secretaries are doing at the building level. So we need to be totally accurate on this um October one report for a lot of reasons. So when that is submitted, you'll get a very detailed report of um private school enrollments, charter school, school choice out broken down, um even by grade, if you uh would like to see that. But to get that accurate, it takes the whole month of October. So we are um doing that currently. It takes a little while though. So I appreciate your patience on that. I did give you the um the total enrollment as of October one um and compared to last year. So uh that was the best I could do for this meeting, uh but that will be coming.
Thank you, Member Gusterson. Uh, Member Lavoy has a follow up question. Um, so I will allow it now. Member Lavoy?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. I'm a little confused as to what um Brendan Keenan just mentioned because I just want to share with this committee that on September thirtieth, I made a information request to Dr. McCall asking for updated numbers and potential financial impact on students leaving the district for home, school, private or school choice. I have not seen those numbers, but on October fifth, Dr. McCall responded and he stated that I was hoping to have final numbers for October one by the end of the week or early next week. I'd like to have the correct number that we are certifying with the state. That must be done by the fifteenth of October. So I'm a little concerned as to communication that we're hearing from um Mr. Keenan because it seems to contradict the expectations that Dr. McCall had provided when I made the information request. That information request still has not been responded to and that was twelve days ago.
I'm just trying to get to your follow up question, which is why why we skipped.
Yeah, Member Keenan just said we had to do it by October thirty first and it takes the whole month. Dr. McCall told me in writing it had to be done by the fifteenth of October. Since August twenty sixth.
Okay, you're talking about two different things, Matt. Brendan's talking about um the report associated with uh kids who are um, you know, going into private schools and so forth in terms of the October one report that Jay Howe does um out of Barry's office. Those numbers, those preliminary numbers are pulled together um October first, they're then sorted through, quadruple checked and then have to be finalized by the fifteenth. What I said to you was, I was hoping to have that ready by the end of next week or the beginning of this week so that we can have that ready and I can share that with you. That's one thing. Brendan's report is another another thing. So the state asks for the October one numbers associated with pure enrollment, but then also uh the out of district numbers that Brendan talked about. And those are due at a different time.
Right. In the numbers on the numbers on enroll, the the members
Follow up question. We can have further comments in your spare time.
Follow up question regarding that. The members, first that member, we can go back and forth, Megan, and cut each other off, but part of listening is to listen.
This is, this is, this meeting is being chaired by myself. Um, I allowed you to ask a follow up question, the Member Gusterson's comment. You'll have a turn to speak and two members. So you'll have
So I I have a follow up point on this. When I followed up with Dr. McCall today for the information request, he responded to me saying, please see Brendan Keenan's report for enrollment information. So I'm confused because right now he's saying it's a different report. This morning's email told me to look at that report.
Member Lavoy, um, Dr. McCall, apparently there is a little confusion regarding these numbers. Um, if these need to be certified by the fifteenth, um, which is two days, I would appreciate as a request by the chair to have the numbers you're sending to the state by the fifteenth and then Director Keenan as soon as those have a breakdown per where the students are headed, whether it's private school or homeschool or out of district, if you can provide those um as soon as those are available. And I believe that would remedy both concerns. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it. Member Haber?
Hi, uh, most of my questions were already asked. Um, I do want to mention that the task force has been reengaged. Um, they will meet tomorrow. Um, but again, we don't have a direction yet. Um, we have a meeting tomorrow at five o'clock and I still haven't got an email about what we're meeting about. Um, so I'm happy to participate, but I wish that we had some direction ahead of time so people could be prepared. It just seems like this happens not just a task force, but with all of our meetings that we're getting this last minute information.
Uh, Director Keenan, do you have a
Uh, yeah, just to respond to that, um, because it can get missed in calendar invites. In the invite, um I previewed that we're going to be discussing um the communication plan, reviewing that. Um, sometimes in I I can see why you might have missed it. It's in the memo of the calendar invite, but just want to make sure you know that. Um that's all.
All right. Thank you, Member Haber. And if you would, um, for our next meeting, would you mind providing a short report on on how that went? Or maybe, thank you. Uh, Member Kirshenbaum?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Uh, I thanks, thank the administration for um continuing to work hard at trying to get our schools uh reopened um on time. Uh, my question has to do with our reopening plan and our target dates. I'm just wondering um, can you be, I'm assuming that you had a very rich conversation with the potential consultants um about some of the needs, some of the uh the uh to dos that need to be done. I'm just wondering if uh we have the resources and the personnel uh at hand to get those to dos done. Um, I would like to know what those to dos are and what uh what personnel, what resources uh need to be done, need to need to be in place in order to get those things done for our uh big reopening event on October, I mean, on November eighteenth.
So um, those are actually the items that we're defining with the 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 consultants that, you know, we're looking at. So Laura, I think one of the things that I can do and we can write that that up so that you can get it formally. I think that'd probably be a little easier for me to explain. So that way you can see, okay, here here are the action steps that still need to happen. Here are the people responsible. Would that work?
I think that level of detail would be helpful, not only to this body, but also to our constituents. I think there's a lot of, a lot of, still a lot of um uh anxiety, angst around making a decision um without having all that information uh in place. And so um the faster, I know that this is a big, big order, but the faster you can get out some information, even if it's not a, uh, you know, this is exactly what it's going to look like, but this is where we're heading. I think that that information would be um, you know, would be a good place for us to uh to 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 get to.
Yep.
Um, and then I also want to echo my concerns around enrollment impact, budgetary impact uh for next year and also um, you know, when we get those numbers about where people have gone, where our students have gone out of district. Um, I would like to know if there is any um information gathering on whether or not they intend to return uh perhaps at at uh next year, um because that's going to impact our budget for next year as well in our projections. So um as much information as we can get from the that enrollment data and the um out of district placement data, I think will help us start to gauge um what we need to do for next year.
And what I can tell you is that, you know, in terms of the homeschool, I know Brendan has had conversations directly with families who've kind of put forth this uh kind of information associated with, uh, you know, why they're deciding to homeschool. Um, many of the families are doing this because they just feel as though they're safer at home. Uh, they didn't want their kids back in school. Uh, we know that there are families who are planning on coming back once there is um some sense of normalcy, maybe immunization, those types of things uh that'll that'll make them feel safer. In terms of added district placements, if we're talking special education added district placements, I don't think we're going to see that decrease where, you know, if we have kids going out, they're going out. Um, and typically that's, that's something that was ongoing prior to uh COVID kicking in.
Yeah, I'd like to know um about like people that are uh that have opted for private school um for this year. Um, it'd be nice to know if they have intentions of returning um or if it's just a done deal and they're gonna um see their way out on the long term. Uh, that will have implications for staffing, for programming, for everything. So the sooner we start to think about that, the better off we'll be. Uh, thank you.
Yeah. And again, um, Member Kirshenbaum, when we're talking, what's, what we're going to have to look at with this is that right now the state's having some issues collecting information pertaining to um the the October one numbers. Um, I Barry, did you want to jump in on that a little bit? Because I know that's something that you and I had talked about with Jay Howe.
Yep. Yeah, so I might be able to clear up some of the confusion with the questions about state reporting on October 1. So typically it's, we don't actually send anything to the state anymore as a report. It's done electronically through a SIF platform. So essentially our data is being sent to the state all the time. What happens on October 1st is that the state takes a snapshot of the school's data and compares with what's supposed to be there and whether or not there's any data in there that needs to be corrected. They send back errors, there's an error reporting thing. They look for duplicate students where two districts might be claiming the same student or have the same student in their student information system because they moved, but the old district didn't take them out. So things like that happen, but they all happen on the state side. And then this year, the state has had some serious technical problems. And typically by this time, we might have preliminary numbers on a typical year. This year we don't. The certification deadline for SIF is October 29th. That is the deadline. And really, all we do with it is respond to what the state tells us needs to be investigated and corrected. So we're waiting to do that with information from the state. We are behind schedule on a typical year, but October 29th is the deadline. And, and it's really up to the state to certify us.
Thank you, Barry.
If I could just take one more second to follow up.
Yeah, let me get to you, Member Kirshenbaum, your follow up question?
Thank you. And that is that, do you foresee us as a body, as a school committee, do you need us to do something with the state? A request to reconsider the policies in the past on how budgets are made for the following year based on enrollment numbers? What, what actions do you see us needing to take in order to try to advocate for, for those potential shortfalls that may incur, if that's an appropriate thing to do?
So it's a, it's a very appropriate thing to do in terms of a collective body putting together a letter, basically advocating on behalf of the district and on behalf of districts in terms of the pandemic and the issues associated with lower enrollment based upon students being homeschooled, going to, you know, deciding to go to private schools, all of the things that no one a year ago at this time would have predicted. No one, you know, we've never had numbers drop like this, nor have other districts, you know, anywhere in Massachusetts. So this is an anomaly in that sense. So that is something, and I think I've talked about this, the superintendent's group that I'm part of is working with our legislators around this. I know we have advocates at the State House who are working on this. Senator Goby is working on this, Representative Ferguson is working on this. So it is something that maybe as a body, this, that could be some documentation that is shared with Senator Goby and Representative Ferguson directly to the governor. Again, we still don't have a state budget. Last, gosh, Tuesday or Wednesday, Rebecca, my days are messed, are kind of all blending together, but I had the opportunity to sit through a second public hearing associated with the budget. So there was one that occurred in April. And then there was another one that just happened last week and that was open to the public. Senator Goby had shared it with everyone and I participated in it in terms of being able to listen to it while doing my work. But much of what they talked about was the fact that we're still, even though we're, we're doing a little better in terms of tax revenues, they're still projecting a couple billion dollar shortfall moving forward. It was Wednesday, thank you, Malia. That, that to me is a scary number associated with, not necessarily this year, but next year, which is why it's so important for us to push forward with, hey, listen, you know, that chapter 70 formula either has to change or get expanded or, you know, there has to be hold harmless, whatever it is, so that districts don't lose an enormous amount of money associated with the students that leave the district. Yes, could there be less staffing? Yeah, you could go, but we're already kind of in that mode of reducing staff. So I feel like, you know, we're not really in a place where that, that's really appropriate. When I look at other districts and they have math coaches and science coaches and literacy coaches in their elementary schools, helping their teachers with remote learning and hybrid, and we have nothing. Those are the things that kind of frustrate the heck out of me because we're still, you know, our teachers are working so hard to, you know, get through the kids, but they don't have a lot of the support systems that other districts have. So again, we're already kind of, you know, working toward that model. So yes, Laura, to your point, I think that would be beneficial for us to have a letter sent from the school committee.
Thank you.
Thank you both, and I'd love to work on that with you, Member Kirshenbaum, moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Member Lavoy?
All right. A couple of things that I wanted to just comment on the report. One of them being, I was a little disappointed in the lack of detail in terms of meeting with the education consultants. And it sounded like from Dr. McCall's statement that looking more at two consulting firms to help with operations. And I just want to remind everyone on the committee and administration that there was a specific motion that outlined what, what the consultant or consultant should be, be looking at. So I just want to confirm with Dr. McCall in your conversation, has a consultant firm seen the, the motion that was up and what those expectations are?
Yes, they did.
And the two that you're looking at, what are the areas that you're thinking that they are going to focus on?
So a couple of different areas. One is looking at, you know, ultimately the reopening plan and its effectiveness moving forward, moving, you know, with remote and hybrid, how that's going to play out. Because again, we've seen this play out in other districts and they have some, they've already had the opportunity to work with other districts who have already started this process so they can jump right into it. That was a big part of one of the things that we looked at. Also, communication being, having the capacity to kind of work with the central office in order to ensure that timely information gets out there. So, you know, again, what we're trying to do is establish kind of a baseline from which they can help support what we need to do in order to ensure that information goes out, parents know what's going on, teachers know what's going on, you know what's going on in reference to everything that we're, you know, we're working on as a, as a central office, but ultimately as an administrative team.
Okay, thank you. I did have one other concern and, you know, the, the, I think a few other members mentioned the updated numbers on, on people leaving. So I would just ask through the chair that this information request was made two months ago or so and it was in three consecutive reports by administration without numbers being updated. And I think when the request was originally made, it was focusing on those October 1 numbers. So I would just ask through the chair that if there's an information request that that information or that chart remain in the report until that request is fulfilled? Because I think that would give us all an indication that it's still being worked on. The other thing I would ask through the chair is, I made an additional information request on September 30th that was not fulfilled. And I'm not sure what the best way of managing those are because I made it through the chair into Dr. McCall and I don't think the full school committee is aware of that information request. So I just want to know if we put something on a future meeting to talk about information requests? If we send those to you through the chair, does that go out to the full committee, et cetera?
Matt, I'd be happy to send that out to the full committee. And I think that's a good best practice moving forward.
Okay, so just as a follow up to that, I just want to state it so the committee can hear. I, and Dr. McCall, I appreciate you submitting the professional development dates. The information request I made was a professional development plan and scheduled events for Wednesdays. Who will lead the session, the district, principal, teachers, et cetera, and content? How will feedback after each session be captured, compiled and utilized? And the reason I made that request is we as a school committee vote on a schedule to have professional development on Wednesday. I think it's ultimately important when we're making those types of decisions to know the effectiveness of what's actually happening. So that's the, the basis for it. So I would actually ask that request to be turned into a report that is part of the report every, every either week or a couple of weeks that we have a meeting, giving that information so we can know what's happening and the effectiveness of that.
Member Lavoy, I will send that request for information to the administration, the full school committee. And just as a point of clarification, if other members have requests for information, I, I'd like to compile them all into one email so they don't get kind of lost in the weeds. So if people could email me, let's say by Friday, I will send out that request of information for all members on Friday to the administration so that they get one email in one place for information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Member Lavoy. Member Long-Broyle?
So a lot of my questions have already been asked, but I wanted to get some more information about how the elementary school kids are doing with remote learning. Can you enlighten us a little bit more about how they're doing?
Sure. So what we're, what we're seeing with the elementary kids, A, we're seeing kids that are, you know, working hard because they also have support systems at home helping them out. I do know that parents, grandparents, other family members are helping out our younger kids quite a bit at home. And that's something that has been shared, shared with me via parents as well as teachers and, you know, what they're seeing in terms of how that's kind of playing out. So at the younger levels, it's, it's a little more challenging as you move up in the age levels. It's, makes it, it's a little better by third, fourth, fifth grade. Kids are a little more independent. They have the capacity to do a little more work on their own. Not saying that their, their focus is always perfect. And we know that anyway. So even in a in-person class, it's not going to be perfect all the time. It's hard for a nine, a 10, 11 year old to sit in a desk for hours upon hours at a time. So again, one of the things we're looking at is how we can make it a little more interactive for those students. It's not, okay, you're just in front of the screen for X number of hours a day.
Are you, just a quick follow up. Are you hearing a lot about meltdowns, kids sort of?
No, no, I'm not. Not, not, you know, what I am hearing is that there are kids who are, you know, there are certain kids who, yep, they're, they're not having a good time. But oftentimes it's, they're not on the screen when it's happening. It might happen, you know, the, the parent might actually say, you know, I'm going to mute and take the camera off and, you know, something's going on or before they get on. So those are the, those are things that, you know, I'm hearing a little bit, you know, and that's something that's happened from the beginning, pretty normal. The big difference with kids at home versus school is that kids are different in home than they are at school. Kids are different with their parents than they are with their teacher. It's a different environment. The number of conversations that I've had with parents over the past 30 years around, hey, your, your child's like this in school. And they're like, well, they're like this at home. I, I mean, you know, I can't believe they're that good in school or wow, my kid would never do that. So they're very different. And that's kind of the part that's a little more challenging with the particular model is that you see them in a different light. So they're trying to do school, but they're in their home setting. So again, one of the things that we suggest is the kids aren't working out of their bedroom. They're working in a place that everyone can see. It's a consistent desk or space every day. They're not moving around too much. So it, it's really been something that we've been, you know, talking with principals about and so forth. Bob, did you want to jump in as well?
Yeah, Lynda, your first question there. I think for preschool, preschool K 1, 2, maybe up to grade 2, teachers are standing on their head to get kids to just pay attention. So it's definitely not the best situation is to have it be remote. 3, 4, 5, a little bit older, like kids are able to handle it a little bit better. We're getting a little bit more out of it. It's a real challenge for our teachers. And I also think for the parents as well as the students for, for those primary grades, it just is, this is not the best situation at all. We are trying to make it work, but this is not what we would vote for. If we could vote for, what do we want to do right now?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Long-Broyle. Appreciate your question. It relates a lot to my very hectic right now. But I do want to give a shout out to teachers that are just phenomenal. I couldn't ask for more. Member Mills?
All right, four quick things. One, I appreciate the, the response from the last time, but I think it's, it's what I call anecdotal data, right? It's like, somewhat heard, I've heard, I've looked at, right? I think we need to do our best to make, collect real assessment data so we can make data-driven decisions. So I've heard anecdotal data tonight, not working for the little kids, working good for the high school. If we collect real data, then that can inform our decisions and say, maybe our priority is getting the K to five kids back fast and let the high school kids a week or two later. Like using, collect real data, right? And make decisions off of real data is my, my suggestion too. MLC, the possibility of hold harmless disappearing, we have got as a school committee to get on advocacy for that. Public comment closes on Friday. We, we've got to do something because that would be a disaster for our district if hold harmless goes away. Three, we talked about, you know, kids are homeschooling because they don't feel safe. Well, we're providing a remote option. So somehow it's not just that, right? Somehow it is what, they were uncomfortable with what we were offering remotely in term to homeschool again. So we really need to investigate that. So I don't buy that as an excuse for why so many kids are homeschooling when they could just be remote, right? And then we're providing them remote and the teachers are doing a great job with it. So that's, that's my, that's last thing. My main comment, those just came up as I was listening. My, my comment was, I see a, a slow rolling disaster next week that we've already seen twice this year and I'm just really frustrated. I understand that we're not going to, you're still talking to the union. Thursday I hear that you're going to talk to the union. So I really don't see us getting a lot of information by Friday or being very well processed by Friday. We're going to get data, a plan next week that parents are going to have a ton of questions about. They're not going to have any feedback, two-way opportunities to get questions answered. I don't think it requires a school committee meeting, but at least some outreach, some question answer thing to clarify their decisions. Parents who work won't have a weekend where they can sit on a Saturday and say, let's just look at this information the day the district gave us. Let's think this through, let's make an important decision for the year for our kid. And it's going to be a ton of ticked off people, I caught myself there, emailing us, social media, rightly so, because they've had no opportunity for two-way feedback. A deadline is approaching without any information about when they're going to get information. I think it's very predictable that when this hits next week, people are going to have questions, no real outlet for it. Your principals are going to get slammed with questions. Central office is going to get slammed with questions. And, and it's fair, right? Because this deadline is a week from Friday. And it's, it's going to be another repeat of the chaos we saw the last two times we had deadlines for plans. So I strongly encourage either through the committee or through central office, that we come up with a thing where we tell parents, we will tell you by this date, we will have these two sessions to take your questions, whether they're virtual, whether they're by mail in, whether they're something. We will answer those questions. You will have time to process them and then make your decision. And I know we got to get to November 18th, but somehow we just, you just can't do it wrong, right? You just can't like throw stuff at them and then expect a decision without just a repeat of what we saw the last two times. So that's just my, I don't know how many cents that was, but two cents.
I think that was a lot of sense and it made sense.
Yeah.
Dr. McCall, anything you can provide?
Yeah, so and I think the concept of having the opportunity for parents to provide feedback for open, open questions and so forth is something that I want to do next week to give people the opportunity to talk, to kind of put something out there so that if there is the opportunity for them to ask questions, we can answer them collectively. So I think that's, that's something that we have to do. But there also has to be some more general information that goes out there to families so that they can make an informed decision. Can I, I hear what you're saying about the timeline and so forth? So definitely something that we're, we're going to do.
And I just encourage you, my follow up is, is you have to communicate the timeline, right? Because people, people will get anxious and rightfully cranky if they're thinking, when are they going to tell us? When am I going to get my questions answered? So there just has to be some timeline that gives people time and respects their time too. But like, can't be like, oh, because people may have a work meeting tomorrow morning and they just can't deal with it by night before and make a one day decision, right?
Thank you, Member Mills. Member Mitchell?
Well, as always, Member Mills did a great job. I appreciate that because by the time it gets to me, majority of my statements have been addressed. So I have no additional comments.
That's it, Member Mitchell. I put a star next to your name. That means you're starting next time. So you better be ready to roll. Number Uno. Member Ottmar?
All right, thank you. Again, a lot of great questions that have been asked. Again, my question pertains to the enrollment numbers as well that were. Again, my question pertains to the enrollment numbers as well that were in Mr. Keenan's addendum or his attachment. Again, as Member Mills said, potentially looking at a drop of 400 students from the district. Hold harmless stays in place, then we're looking at flat numbers for next year. But if they take, again, they decide to take that, strike that from the laws, then that's a bunch of chaos that we really don't need. But my question relates to, have we taken a look at basically doing a crosswalk with our staffing against that drop in 400 number? Because for a drop of 400 students, you're looking about 31 across our 13 grades. And if we go back and look at our tier-two cuts, we had 13 teachers that were in that tier-two. And so have we like circled back around and said like, well, because of our budget situation, we had to cut some teachers. But we also have 400 less students in our district. So some of those cuts may not have, end up being as acute as we thought they would have been two months ago when we were projecting 400 more students in our district. So my question is, have we kind of circled around to take a closer look at that? Or is that something that we're still kind of weeding through?
So really, it's a little bit of both, Carl. When we're thinking about what we're looking at in terms of numbers, again, because we're talking about 400 kids, but they're 400 kids spread out over, you know, it's three-year-olds all the way to post-grads. So it's spread out over more than 12 grades. That means, you know, when we're talking about numbers per grade, then you break it down by school. It might mean one or two kids at a particular grade level. So you might go from 20 down to 18, which doesn't allow us to then merge to take a look at those kids. So I know Rebecca had pulled some class-size numbers for me a couple of weeks ago, and we took a look at them. You know, there are probably some places where we're going to be able to find, you know, consolidate, you know? And it's not pull teachers together, but I think we're going to have some situations where teachers might retire and so forth. So that might be a place, if it's really small class sizes, we would consolidate. In terms of looking at next year, and if we don't get those kids back, those 400 kids, and we're in a situation where we don't need as many teachers, again, I'm still trying to work as best I can within the confines of the school committee numbers associated with recommended class sizes. Because again, we have a lot of places where we're still over those numbers, even with our lower 400, you know, dropping 400 kids. It's still, you know, it's still off. So how that kind of plays out, I think is going to be something that we look at a little more closely. But yeah, we have taken a look at the numbers. They're not dramatically different. I'm not seeing drops of 30 kids in a grade, so I can say, okay, good, we can consolidate. We don't have to worry about that. And that's something Bob has looked at with principals, I've looked at with principals. We've looked at it holistically, and there just aren't a lot of places where we could consolidate.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Member Atmar. Member Shapiro.
Hi, yes. Again, thank you, Member Mills. My concern about the timeline of getting the information and then making the decision for the survey was definitely a concern of mine. So well said. Along that, though, I've been hearing a lot from people as far as a concern of something that was kind of posted as a side note in one of our meetings a couple of weeks ago, and on one of the slides, saying that when we moved to hybrid, that busing was only going to be allowed from the student's home and that busing from daycare centers and before-school and after-school centers was not going to be allowed. Is that, as a preview, is that still in the plan and still what's considered for that?
Yeah, so Deidre, when we're looking at this, because of the way it works with our transportation schedule, we, if we have families that they pick up at their house, but they drop off at a daycare center, those kids are taking up two spots on two buses. And we're limited to 23 to 20, you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
So it, what happens is, it would put us in a situation where we would literally be adding probably several buses routes that we'd have to then kind of expand upon, which is, you know, by the time we add these buses, they're going to be in the $40,000 range at least a piece in terms of doing that. So that's why, again, when we're doing this, we're saying it's the same pickup and the same drop-off. So even if it's, they're picking, and again, this is something we're having more discussions on, but even if it's a pickup at your grandmother's house and it's a drop-off at the grandmother's house, that's the bus, that's the spot, because we're still looking to do this by name. So if that's the case, that's fine. But we just can't do two different locations for morning and afternoon.
I see. So if the daycare center is essentially the morning spot and the afternoon spot, then that would be considered there?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. That's something that we can work around. It's just when we run into issues associated with two different spots, two different spaces that are taken up on buses, we just, we're going to run out of room.
I think that that needs to be clarified, because what I'm hearing from parents is that that's not supporting working parents. And I think a working parent would be, you know, would consider the challenge that you're talking about of having two spots. So, you know, to work out their schedule where it's the same spot every single pickup and drop-off, five days a week or whatever, that's what working parents are looking for.
Yeah, and that's exactly it. It's got to be five days a week. It's got to be the same spot. Or not five days, two days, because it's going to be the two days.
Exactly. So if that can be spelled out a little clearer, I think that would be helpful.
We can do that through our transportation.
Great. Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Member Shapiro. And last but not least, Member Silva.
Yeah, so I would like to chime in with what Member Mills mentioned. All my concerns have already been addressed, but I do have one I would like some more detail on. I know you said we would have more information by Friday. What exactly is that information going to be? And when parents are asked to make a decision, what information are they going to be provided with? And is it going to be a one question at one time? Or is it going to be an evolving question over time as more information becomes available? The reason why I'm asking is giving parents a general idea of what hybrid and remote looks like is one question. But then giving parents another idea of if teachers are being changed on their kids or the amount of instruction time or how exactly it's going to happen, you know, with the details of each schedule per child may affect their decision based on per child or per family. So is this a one-time deal where if a parent says on this one particular survey a question, and that's it, are they locked in? Or is this going to be more of an evolution type of survey?
Yeah, so in terms of a survey, they're not locked in. You know, again, one of the things that the state has stressed is that parents have the opportunity to have some flexibility associated with their learning opportunity for their children. So there are families that choose remote. And then down the road, they might say, you know what, I'd like my child to come back into hybrid. Well, we can do it. It takes, you know, it'll take a week or two to kind of do the schedule and make sure we have the spacing for them in the classroom, but that's something that we will do. They will have that opportunity. They're not going to be locked into hybrid or remote, you know, during the school year. But we will, we will have, you know, as much defined information as we can give them at that time so that they can make a decision, and it won't really be a rolling survey, if that makes sense.
Well, as a follow-up question, you know, is it going to be clarified that if they change their mind, how long it will take? Because telling parents that it may take up to two weeks and not being definite about it is, at that point, some parents might say, just sign up for it and push and pull back versus pull back first. Because if it's a situation where I can't get my child in for a whole month and we only go so many months out of the year for school, that's a long time for my child if I chose hybrid not to be in school.
Yeah, so I had put something out there, gosh, in one of my last communications, you know, in reference to when we transition from one model to another or when a parent requests the transition from one model to the other, that it would take a little bit of time in terms of just organizing the classroom, ensuring that there's space, bringing the child back in. So there was that that had to come into play. You know, all we're saying, and this is what many districts are saying, there's no definitive timeframe for it. It's as soon as we can do it. So, but people can't expect, what people have to understand is that it's not going to happen overnight. So you're not going to say, okay, I'm remote right now, but tomorrow I want my kid hybrid. It's not going to happen, because we literally can't just fix a spot, do a schedule, put a child in there, make sure the space is all set. That's what we can't do. Some places, it might be easier, might take them a little less time. But there is a timeframe that we have to kind of put out there that people have to understand. It's not going to happen overnight.
And is that the same thing as for someone who chooses hybrid to go remote? Or is that going to be a faster?
That'll be faster, because again, it's, you know, we're not looking at the space issues associated with those students or transportation. It's just rolling them into a schedule.
All right. Thank you, Member Silva. And thank you, everybody, for your questions and comments this evening. At this point, we're going to move forward with our school committee agenda. We do have two motions on the agenda that are requiring action by the school committee. The first, I'm going to read aloud, to accept the FY19 annual financial statements, FY19 audited end-of-year report, FY19 single audit, and FY19 student activities audit, as well as the management letter prepared by district auditors, Melanson CPAs for fiscal year ended June 30, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And before we have discussion, is Director Didi here? Would you like to offer any?
So good evening, everyone. And these audits were shared at Audit Advisory back in July. The senior auditor from Melanson presented to the committee that evening. And then last Monday evening, I shared, I gave, I guess, a 50,000-foot overview of the audits. Just very quickly, in terms of the financials, one of the significant changes there is that our OPEB obligation increased approximately 28%. Roughly $37.7 million. So our, this unfunded obligation is approximately $175 million now at the end of FY19. Our ending balance on the general fund at the end of FY19 was approximately $134,000. The fund balance, the undesignated fund balance, was approximately $1.3 million. In terms of the single audit, we had a perfect audit, a clean audit. It's the first time in a number of years that we've had such an audit. Secondly, in terms of the end-of-year report audit, we had a perfect audit. There were no findings whatsoever. And again, it's the first time in a number of years. Unfortunately, with student activities, and these have been problematic over the past several years. It's a project that I became aware of when I first started onboard, you know, two years ago. We did have eight findings, and we are in the process of working to correct those findings. In terms of the management letter, there were also three findings that were addressed in there as well. Number one, there was a concern about the number of bank accounts that we maintain. In the auditor's eyes, we had too many bank accounts. We're looking at those accounts and where, if we can consolidate or close out, we'll do that. Secondly, there is a concern about the process relative to warrants and internal controls. And those are being addressed. And then thirdly, there was just a question raised about the thresholds in our federal grants manual. That is a 50,000-foot overview, Madam Chair. And we went into much more detail at Audit Advisory and Finance. Chairman Mitchell is here. Ben, did I miss anything?
No, I think you covered that well, Ben. I don't have any additional statements or anything.
Okay, thank you, Director Didi and Chair Mitchell. Do other members of the committee have comments or concerns? Member Mills?
Yes, so I'd encourage other members of Business and Finance to chime in. I don't think Member Dennis is here, right, as the chair of Business and Finance and the vice chair. We did briefly discuss this at Business and Finance. I think in particular, I think we focused a little bit more on the student activity concerns. I think Business and Finance, this was on our agenda twice, and I think we kind of were, to some degree, deferred this to AAB, hoping that they would have input, you know, into this, and then Member Mitchell, you know, did there. And I encourage, you know, if Member Gustafson or others have other recollections of things from our Business and Finance meeting, since Member Didi referenced it a couple of times, if I could add that in.
Thank you, Member Mills. I'm going to ask for that feedback as well. Member Gustafson, do you have?
I don't have specific recollections. The only thing I recall was a specific mention that the student activities, work on the student activities processed handbook would be happening shortly. And I don't know if we have an updated timeline on that, but that was discussed as a major area of concern and process that needed to be addressed in the next, I guess, couple of weeks. So I don't know if there's an update on that since our meeting. I think everything else has been covered, though.
Through the chair, we are working on that. I did have a conversation last week with Ben, and we're looking to have a follow-up meeting with AAB sometime in November, at which point we would present the draft booklet relative to student activities. And hopefully, at that time, AAB will then sign off on the audit findings. And I'll then bring them forward to Melanson CPAs, make them aware that we've addressed their concerns, and they can sign off on those issues as well. And then once that's done, then we get into the nitty-gritty. We'll need to sit down, we need to do trainings with staff, with all the key stakeholders relative to student activities, and walk them through the process and the guidelines that were discussed and outlined in the audit for student activities.
Thank you. Member Ayala, you had a question?
I do. It was in regards to the adopting certain policies and procedures for the Student Activities Fund. I'm just curious, should this be a subcommittee or short-term subcommittee that helps with this? Or is that something that is only through the Finance Committee dealing with coming up the policy and procedures? Because it specifically said the school committee in the write-up. So I'm just curious if that would be appropriate or not.
So in the findings, Melanson referenced DESI guidelines. The guidelines changed actually about, I'll say, five years ago. Don't hold me to the exact date. And so we're a little bit behind the eight ball, but we're moving forward. And in essence, what we'd be doing is taking those guidelines as presented by the DESI and just incorporating them into our new guidelines here. I mean, I'm welcome. I'm happy to receive the input. But I think, you know, once I complete this task, again, I'll bring it before Audit Advisory and then Finance as well. So they're privy to the changes that we'll be working forward with.
Sure, can I make a quick statement?
Of course, Member.
Regarding the question, these changes are more to put us in line with DESI standards, as Director Didi said, than something that is subjective. These are more objective standards that we have to adhere to, that we've just taken. You know, it wasn't a critical finding. It was more of a, we just have to get aligned with the current standings.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Are there further questions or comments? Seeing none, we're going to take a roll call vote, starting at the top. Member Ayala?
Yes, Ayala.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Gustafson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Longbulio?
Yes, sorry.
No worries. Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Smith, is she still with us? I don't believe so. Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
And the chair votes yes, the motion passes. Next on our agenda tonight, and I am asking you guys to bear with me, the the motion that needs to be read is actually quite lengthy. But because of the importance of the motion, I feel that it's in our best interest to read the entirety of the motion. So if you bear with me, I'm actually going to attempt to also share my screen so you guys can see it as I read it, so it makes a little more sense to everybody. And then I'll read the motion, and we can have discussion. One second. There we go. Can everybody see my screen? That it should say 10, 13, 20 motions doc?
Can you make the font bigger?
I will. I'm on it. Let me zoom in. Whoa, too big. Is that better, Linda?
That's thank you, yes.
OK, great. All right, so I'm going to read this, and you guys can read along. Makes it a little easier than and reading all this by itself. So the motion is to approve the sale of the district's $4,145,000 general obligation state qualified refunding bonds and the execution of relating closing documents prepared by bond council to the district. Voted that in order to reduce costs, the district treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund a portion of the district's $6,100,000 general obligation school bonds unlimited tax dated August 21, 2008, maturing in the years 2021 through 2028 inclusive, II, $2,134,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2009 bonds dated October 15, 2009, maturing in the years 2021 through 2026 inclusive, and III, $3,094,000 general obligation school bonds dated January 27, 2011, maturing in the years 2022 through 2030 inclusive. Collectively, the refunded bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and interest on the refunded bonds and costs of issuance of the refunding bonds. Further voted that the sale of the $4,145,000 general obligation state qualified refunding bonds of the district dated October 22, 2020, the bonds, to Roosevelt and Cross Incorporated at the price of $4,720,524.70 is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on September 1 of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at respective rates as follows. You guys can see the chart that follows. The year 2021, amount 550,000, rate 4%. Year 2022, amount 540,000, same rate. 2023, 545,000, same rate. 2024, 525,000, same rate. 2025, 515,000 at the same rate. Year 2026, 510,000 at the same rate. Year 2027, $410,000 at the same rate. Year 2028, $410,000 at the same rate. And finally, year 2029, $135,000 at the same rate. Further noted that in connection with the marketing and sale of bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated September 23, 2020, and a final official statement dated September 30, 2020, the official statement, each in such forms may be approved by the district treasurer and be hereby or ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted to authorize the execution and delivery of a refunding escrow agreement to be dated October 22, 2020, among the U the District US Bank National Association as refunding escrow agent, and the treasurer and receiver general, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, as paying agent. Further voted that the district treasurer and the chair of the committee be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by a bond council to the district, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the district treasurer to establish a post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the district treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of all signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents, and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the committee, the district secretary, and the district treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of foregoing votes. And so my years reciting Shakespeare to my students came in handy tonight with the language there. I do want to just start by saying that I was part of the process in order to refinance these bonds. I sat in a meeting with Director Didi, as well as Jim Dunbar, our treasurer, where we went before the state. The process was very easy, and the committee was very enthusiastic in order to provide this bond to us. So do I have a motion on the floor?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there further questions regarding the bond refinance? Member Mills, please.
Business and Finance discussed this last Monday, and we didn't take an official vote, but there was brief discussion and enthusiasm in general about the the motion, and thanks to Member Didi.
Thank you, Member Mills. Are there others that have questions or comments?
So, Madam Chair, if I may, to the the bottom line here, as we spoke about at Business and Finance last week, is through the term of this refinancing, there's a savings of just under $700,000, approximately $676,357.12. And it is my intent to to recalculate the debt assessments for the towns now. And also, I'm responsible at this time to to develop what's what's called a bond premium letter that that gets sent to each of the treasurers. And that letter will reflect the these new figures once they're they're voted this evening. And the last task in this process is actually to meet with each of the treasurers tomorrow and have them sign off on some very extensive paperwork. I can't thank enough the great work that Treasurer Dunbar has done, and also our financial advisor, Hilltop Securities, led by by Mary Connie. And as as the chair has noted, we had a great meeting before Business and Finance Board this past July, which included the state treasurer and and the state auditor as well.
Thank you so much for the further clarification. Any other members wish to ask? OK, seeing none, we'll go back to a roll call vote. Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Gustafson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum? Yes. Member Longbulio?
Longbulio, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Smith? And Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
And Member Young?
Young, yes.
And the chair votes yes, the motion, my God, the motion passes. It's too early for me to get tired yet. We still got a ways to go. All right. So next on the agenda tonight is unfinished business. There's no unfinished business on the agenda. Next tonight is the secretaries' report. We have first the approval of executive minutes of the Waukesha Regional School District held on August 24, 2020. We're going to hold those executive session minutes. Item B, the approval of the executive session minutes of the Waukesha Regional School District Committee held on September 14. Again, we're holding the executive session minutes for the time being. Item C, approval of the 326 special meeting minutes of the Waukesha Regional School District held in September 29, 2020, as enclosed. Do I have a motion on the floor for this?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call vote. Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Gustafson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Longbulio, yes.
Member Longbulio?
Longbulio, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
And the chair votes yes. Item D, approval of the executive session minutes at the Waukesha Regional School District Committee held on September 29, 2020. Again, those will be held for now. Finally, in the secretaries' report, approval of the 1352 regular minutes of the Waukesha Regional School District Committee held on September 29, 2020, as enclosed. Are there any corrections or addendums to these minutes? Oh, first, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any corrections or addendums to these minutes? Seeing none, another roll call vote, please. Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Gustafson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Longbulio?
Longbulio, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, same.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
The chair votes yes. Thank you, guys, so much. Next on the agenda tonight is the chargers' report and financial statements. Please direct those questions to Director Didi. Next tonight, committee report. Management Subcommittee is first on the agenda tonight. We met, and again, I'm going to get my dates crossed. We have not met since the last. We have not met since the last meeting on our October 5th. We are going to be meeting in about two weeks. Ed Sub, Christina's left us. Member Longbulio, Vice Chair?
Yes, our meeting was canceled, so our next meeting will be the the hour before the next school committee meeting on November 9.
Thank you very much. Business Finance, Chair Dennis isn't here. Vice Chair Mills, do you have a report on that? You also have a policy.
Yes, we met last last Monday, and a lot of what we talked has already been been discussed at this meeting. We talked about the audits, including the OPEB, the big OPEB liability, and our contributions, minimal as they are to that fund. We talked about fiscal year 20, and the potential balances. We talked about where we are with 21, including the fact that the Director Didi is sitting is is marking a number of of charges for COVID in case they're eligible for for reimbursements, or assuming they will be. We talked about transportation settlement going to legal. We talked about the enrollment trends, and and we talked about the policy review, which I don't have right in front of me, because I wasn't anticipating reading this tonight. But I can call that up.
Actually, I can share my screen. It's in the same motions document. Number, like.
Great.
All right, give me one second to present that again. That's the wrong one. I think that's the right one. Hold on one second. Sorry, guys, I have too many tabs open. 10, 13, this one. OK, here we go. So let me just scroll down for you. Oh, I have the first reading on them in here. It's in the it's in the other documents. I'm sorry, Ken.
No, it's OK. I will make a motion to to approve the first reading of amended policy 4323.2, policy relating to budget and finance bidding requirements, waiving the reading of the full policy.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
So we're really just trying to adjust our policy here to match state law, which has increased some of the the minimah requiring certain certain bidding requirements. So essentially, we're just matching what the what Chapter 30B says now.
Are there other questions for our Business and Finance regarding this amended policy? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Gustafson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Longbulio?
Longbulio, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
And Member Young?
Young, yes.
And the chair votes yes. Any further updates for Business and Finance, Member Mills?
I think that's it. Again, we've talked a lot about that throughout the course of the meeting.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda tonight is Legal Affairs Subcommittee. Member Chair Brown, do you have an update?
Yes, I do. We met on Wednesday, September 30. We went over quite a few things. One of the things we did go over was appointing legal counsel going forward. Naomi Stoneberg, that's been with us for quite a while, she is going to be retiring. She is not going to leave us in the lurch in regarding the MOA negotiation, so she's going to stay on for that. But going forward, we do have those three locals that are evergreen, plus we have two, including the WREA, that we need to start negotiating their contract that expires next June. So we decided as a subcommittee that we are going to keep three lawyers on hand. They're not on retainer or anything like that, which saves the district money. So we are going to go and interview law firms to replace Naomi. So we are going to go and interview law firms to replace Naomi. We're still going to have Joe Batoulis, and we're going to have Matt McAvoy for the special education. So we have a list already of law firms. We're just going to send out invites and see where that takes us, and then we will bring it to the full committee to vote on the representation.
Any questions for legal? Seeing none. We have Superintendent Goals and Evaluation Subcommittee. Member Mills, your chair?
So we met last Wednesday. We first off reviewed strategies with regards to implementing a process for 360-degree reviews with perhaps piloting questions this year, so we are doing more research about how that's been done at other places and why perhaps other places abandoned such work to learn best practices. We saw a first draft that night of the superintendent's goals revolving around strategic planning, around the quote-unquote "modern classroom," around anti-racism and diversity equity inclusion, and around student retention. So they were very preliminary, so we gave him significant feedback to, he'll bring them back to the subcommittee. We'd also done some homework on selecting indicators, and and we'll discuss that at our next meeting in a few weeks. I think it's the 28th of October.
Any questions for Superintendent Goals and Evaluation? Seeing none. Onto Facilities and Security Subcommittee. Chair Young, an update?
Yep, we have not met since the last meeting. As people know, we lost a member. As of yesterday, it looks like Member Lavoy will be stepping into that position. So we'll be back up to three, which I'm more comfortable with meeting. Otherwise, the chair has a little too much control over the meeting. But, so we'll be looking to set up a meeting very, very soon. One of the key things we'll look at, we have the report from the initial look at the sampling of the special ed room HVAC systems. There was a few issues. All things were fixed, but we'll circulate that through the committee, and then we'll discuss it at the next meeting. And then we'll be attacking some policies. That's it.
And Adam, if I can just chime in a little bit, we did just find out today that we will have the full report from the other spaces throughout the district. They're completing their assessments on the 15th, and we'll have a full report by the 28th of this month.
Okay, excellent. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Facilities, guys? Seeing none. Diversity, Equity, and Anti-Racism. Chair Silva?
Yes, we met on October 8th, evening of October 8th, and we had a great discussion around the bullying policy. We were informed that there is a form on the school website that can be done anonymously for like a bullying incident, and we asked for that to also be put under where parents can find it a little bit easier. We do have two other policies we're going to review, and we're going to be meeting again October 29th at 7:00 PM.
Any questions for Diversity? Seeing none. Audit Advisory Board, Chair Mitchell?
As Director Deedee said, we are waiting for his final findings, and we will have a meeting sometime in November to close the books.
Great, thank you so much, Member Mitchell. I appreciate it. We don't have any ad hoc subcommittees at the moment, or building committees. School Council reports, I know CPAC has one. I'd just like to put it out there now. I know you guys are all assigned to schools, schools up and running. I'm sure that principals are working on putting these together, but to the administration, I'm hoping that these can get rolling in time for our next meeting. So CPAC?
Sure, I have a couple of things from CPAC. They had a meeting on October 5th, just thinking backwards, where we had officer elections, so they elected, I don't know if you want me to read all of them, they elected all their new officers for the year, and those are on the website. I'm happy to read them all for the record if anyone would like me to, or just refer to the websites. Actually, I'll list the chairs because people may need to know that. The co-chair persons this year are Rachel Bullock, Melissa Martin, and Tammy Todd, and their contact information is also on the CPAC website and Facebook page if anyone needs to reach out to them. They, the director fundraising position is still open, and all the others were able to be filled that night, so that's the update on that. There was also the second part of the meeting, which I missed because I had to go to Business and Finance, was that there was a presentation and more question and answers that Christine Smith did, which was very helpful, and the full transcript and video of that and slides are online on their website as well, which you can find if you follow the links from our main page. I wish it was easier to find, honestly. It's from our main page, then you have to go to the special ed page, then the CPAC section. So, and they're also on their Facebook page, so I'll mention that. The other update is
Not to cut you off, but this might be a great thing for the students to put on their page that they have.
Sure, I can send you the link. It's kind of hard to find, but it's helpful. The other thing is that their next meeting is October 28th, Wednesday, from 6:30 to I'm not sure if it ends at 8:00 or 8:30. It was originally 8:00, not sure if it's going long, but at least 6:30 to 8:00. At that meeting, they will have a presentation by Christine Smith on compensatory services and COVID compensatory services, which is a big question right now that a lot of families are asking information about. There's a deadline coming up in I honestly don't remember if it's late November or, I think it's mid-December that parents have regarding that on the state level, so we appreciate, I know they appreciate her doing that presentation. They've also invited Attorney Terry Ramos to provide a broader perspective about and answer questions about things on the state level. And so she'll be also speaking at that, so I strongly encourage people to attend that in some way. I think it's going to be a really great meeting, and I know there's a lot of questions around these services, and there is a deadline for requesting meetings and things around that, which I know will be covered, but it's a really important meeting, and I'm really appreciative, and I know that CPAC is that the district is taking time to speak and provide us information, so that's what I have. Any questions people have, they can contact CPAC. You can find them on Facebook, on our page. You can email the chairs. You can email me, and I can put you in touch with them. Thank you.
Letting votes. And then do you mind emailing Catherine and Kneeche the CPAC website so that, I think their website's become very successful? Thank you. I do have three public comments that came in during the meeting tonight, so I do want to read those before we conclude this evening. The first comes from Ryan Hinson. Ryan Zagami, sorry, his email says Hinson. Hi, my name is Ryan Zagami, and I'm a teacher, parent, resident, and alum of Wachusett. I'm sitting here for the eighth month in a row, haven't missed a meeting, wondering how we are here. I was one of the teachers who was part of the 10-6 meeting last week, and while one hour talking and sharing was helpful, there hasn't been follow-up with us from central office or my building about the district, the direction the district is planning to take for the next phase of hybrid. It was an hour-long meeting of sharing in small groups and sharing out to the bigger group. Fast forward a week, principals are sending out information to families about possible hybrid models coming up. We are already in a hybrid model, and trying to make things up as we go can be dangerous. Please, please, please get teachers information about hybrid scheduling. There are teachers and students who are in hybrid right now, and the remote students are having a different experience than those in the classrooms. Has anyone reached out to the families who are in hybrid now to know what's working or not working? This needs to be time in teacher schedules to check in with remote students every day. I'm happy to have anyone from administration come to observe my remote lessons. It's hard work. From taking attendance to the follow-up after each independent work completion piece, how can the plan be to have teachers do both hybrid and remote cohort with the schedule we're currently using? Being live six times a day, no discussion built in for remote-only check-ins? Thank you to the school committee for asking the questions about future impact, homeschooling, et cetera, and asking for deadlines, updated Q and A for parents and teachers. I'll end with teachers need some direction now, especially those who are back in the building with their neediest populations. Please continue to talk to the teachers, from Ryan. Next. From Christina Naaman. As a teacher, parent of two first graders, and a community member, I urge the administration to provide a hybrid plan where students keep with their same teacher, whether they stay hybrid or go remote. Usually takes 68 weeks to get to know young students' academic needs, social, emotional needs, and learning styles. restarting this process November 18th is a detriment to student learning, growth, potential, and social, emotional health. Switching teachers might stifle the robust curriculum and learning upwards of January for many students. Students cannot afford this loss. Given the many changes that are unavoidable, this is one item. Keeping the same teacher while staying remote or going hybrid that has to remain for students, provided the hybrid plan is well thought out. Thank you from Christina Naaman. Finally, tonight, we hear from Erin Ottmar on 232 West Street in Paxton. She says, "Thank you for all your time in helping to work through so many of these complicated issues. I have two children at Paxton Center, K and 2, and their teachers have been beyond wonderful with everything they've done so far to ensure remote learning is working as well as it can. While we wish that these were normal times and all students could safely return to school, we've been thrilled with how well our children and their teachers have been working together. Thank you to all the teachers who are working so hard to make this work. While more information about hybrid we've provided this week, my concerns surrounded surround the lack of discussion about two issues. First, the well-being of the teachers and discussions about what fully remote will look like once hybrid begins. Do the risk in our family that children have to stay fully remote? While remote might be working well for many, it has not been clearly discussed that remote instruction might look different to what it is now once hybrid begins on November 18th. While it is our preference to have our children remain with their wonderful teachers, I have concerns about what this means for K through 5 children who are fully remote. I understand that administration is trying to keep fully remote students with their peers and teachers, as described. But as it was described, if the teachers are working in the classroom with students, how can they provide small group instruction to the remote students? Will a pair professional or co-teacher be in every classroom to work with in-person students? If not, it's inevitable, and once students go back to the classroom, the amount of in-person instruction, as well as remote instruction, will drop significantly. Even if teachers spend divided the classroom into three groups, hybrid in-person, hybrid remote, and fully remote, then each child will only get one-third of the teacher's attention. If the student in person gets the majority of attention, then students who are 100% might be significantly neglected by no fault of their teacher. It appears that the full remote children would only have Wednesday mornings with their teachers and peers, and the remainder of their days might be asynchronous. If that's the case, it's unclear what the benefits of remaining with our same teacher would be, or if the challenges of spending the remainder of the school year with no instruction or peer interaction. Many other districts who are doing hybrid have fully remote students in separate classes with fully remote teachers, and daily schedules look much like they do. Will these children be provided with a second fully remote teacher and other peers in a consistent classroom? If not, how will the district ensure that fully remote students get significant support? Our students and our teachers deserve a plan that maximizes support for hybrid and remote options. Teachers are working around the clock, doing the best they can. Asking them to manage in-person, hybrid, remote, and hybrid without additional support is impossible. Without consistent support for fully remote students, more families will choose to homeschool or leave the district. I hope that, I hope that as the plan for remote and hybrid this week are established, the administration will keep the well-being of teachers and students and quality of instruction provided to children at the forefront, no matter what the families choose. Thank you again for your efforts to return, for the safe return to school, from Erin Ottmar. And that is the end of public comment this evening. Next on the agenda is new business. Is there any new business that a member would like to put on the agenda?
Megan?
Yep, I got a bunch of hands, actually. Member Mills, member Woodland, and then member Gustafson.
I just want to re-beat my drum of the regional agreement for us to discuss that as a full committee sooner than later.
Regional agreement? That, member Woodland?
I don't know if this is an appropriate place for unfinished business, so please tell me if it's not. But an update on the consultant hiring process and the plan, since it's still outstanding?
I'm going to put that, actually, member Woodland, on the request for information, and to have that request fulfilled as soon as possible.
Okay, so that wouldn't count as, sorry, I meant to ask, not for new business, but if that would count as unfinished business?
I don't, it's not an agenda item that we didn't get to, if that makes sense. It's a motion that needs to be fulfilled, and I assume that motion will be fulfilled by week's end.
Okay, thank you.
And if it's not, then we can follow up with that. And then member Gustafson, then member Young?
Yep. I don't know if this is technically new business or where it fits, but you can let me know, but it goes back to something that was brought up in the discussion earlier, but it was not on the agenda, about the the comment period for minimum local contribution in Chapter 70, which has a deadline of Friday, which is why I don't know how it fits, but I wanted to ask the superintendent if the district has made comments on that or reached out to our towns in some coordinated effort, or if he needs us to do anything to help that effort in some coordinated effort, since the deadline for those comments is Friday. And I think, I don't even know if our towns know that, but I hope they do. But I was planning to mention that, and then it came up. Member Mills brought it up earlier, so I just didn't know if there was any kind of coordinated outreach around that, or anything we need to be doing to support that.
Dr. McCall, any, I mean, Malia, I'll tell you, I just put it on my personal agenda to pen a letter to get out by that time, but again, Dr. McCall
I guess my bigger question is, are there specific talking points that the district would appreciate that we make if we do write on our own time, and obviously, we don't all have our own perspectives, but if the district had anything in particular they would like us to convey in that regard, you know, that might be useful to know.
So what else, so good question, Malia. What we'll do is, we will go through, and again, I think there are some talking points that MASSS has put out. I can take those and formulate them in a manner that really addresses our specific needs with Director Deedee, and we can get those out to you, and you can send those letters directly to our reps.
I appreciate that. And have you been in touch with our towns about that as well, about making, I mean, hopefully, they would all be doing this anyways, but have we had any outreach to them to make sure they're aware of this deadline opportunity?
Nope, I have not, but that's, again, I think that's one of the things that I would assume that they're already aware of it.
Yeah.
I can reach out to them as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. That was an important point to make. Member Young, new business?
Yeah, there's something that just came up earlier in the meeting. To either put it as a topic for discussion, or to develop something to present to the committee to track requests for information, so that there's even a simple Google Doc that we can all look at and know what's outstanding, what's not, and also the specific requirements that are, that people are asking for, so that it can be tracked, one, what they're asking for, so the district administration knows what to respond. And, you know, we can track that, and then also the opposite, that, you know, we know what hasn't been answered yet, so I think that'd be great.
Thank you, member Young. I appreciate that. I need that kind of organization myself, these days, so that way to go about it. And then I also have, number Longbalil.
Quickly, if the superintendent could just please make sure he sends out the email about talking points to the entire school committee, I think that would be helpful. It wasn't clear to me, so.
Absolutely, Linda. I'd love to do that, and I'd love to have one on behalf of the committee as well. So, Dr. McCall, if you can get, I know it's, you've got a billion things on your plate, but since the deadline is Friday, if we can grab that maybe Thursday morning, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, Director Deedee and I'll pull that together tomorrow. We'll try to get that out to you by Thursday morning. That way, you can at least get it out Thursday.
Yeah, I want to get it out there before the deadline.
Yep.
Thank you guys so much. That was a really productive discussion. Does anybody else have anything to add? Any light bulbs go off? Seeing none, we're going to call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Second.
It's been moved to second. Roll call vote, member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Gasserson?
Gasserson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Long Belial?
Long Belial, yes.
Member?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro? I saw the hand. I'm going to count it. Remember Silva? Asma, you with us?
Silva, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
And member Young?
Young, yes.
The chair also votes yes. Good night, everybody. I hope you enjoy getting out a little early tonight. I thank you all for your service. Spend some time with your family or watch some mindless television. Have a great night, guys. Take care.